So I is we are May 4, 2022. We have just completed the redistricting special meeting and are turning to a work session first before council time. So I would ask staff, is Oliver going to kick off this discussion?
Yes.
Oliver, go ahead and introduce yourself, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. Oliver Ojago, Community Planning Director, and want to sincerely thank the council for giving us the opportunity to come back and present the Housing Option Studies and Action Plan. And today we are going to also be focusing on the recommendations of the Clark County Planning Commission. First of all, I really want to sincerely thank the Project Advisory Group that worked on this project. I also want to reach out and give special thanks to the consultant that worked with us on this project. Steve Frost from Three J Consulting and Elizabeth Decker from Jet Planning and my own staff, Jenna K, Jackie Camp, and Susan Ellinger. What I will say is that it was a very good process. I won't take a lot of your time. I will assume that the councillors have had the opportunity to read the, to report. We will, for the interest of time, be very, very brief and maybe in details. What I will also ask if you can hold your questions, if it's possible until after the presentation, we will welcome that. The purpose of the housing study is to really understand local challenges with a focus in the Vancouver urban area. And the, 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 the process started with a way to encourage creation of affordable housing to low and moderate income household by looking at removing regulatory barriers and consider strategies and also to provide access to affordable quality and opportunity for future affordable housing for the generations to come. Now, you will see as we go through this presentation or discussion that the action plan identifies strategies and implementing action that will promote greater housing diversity, affordability, and also access to opportunity for residents of all income levels, particularly in the Vancouver urban growth area. And the reason we focus in the Vancouver urban growth area will be apparent to the council. It is the area that the council currently manages. And we provide a variety of housing duplex apartments, condominiums, those type of apartment that you will not find in the rural area. So that was the reason for focusing in the unincorporated area that the county manages. With that, let me turn it over to Jackie and our consultant to take it from there. I will be available to answer questions. Thank you, councillors. Jackie, take it away.
Thank you, Oliver. Good morning, councillors. Jackie Camp, Clark County Community Planning. As Oliver mentioned, today's work session is on the Housing Option Study and Action Plan in preparation for your May 17 hearing on the plan. I just wanted to mention that the plan and all the supporting materials, including the Planning Commission Recommendation Memo and public comments as we receive them are posted to the project page and you will see a link to that on your council meeting page for today's work session and also will probably be there for your May 17 meeting entry as well. Today's presentation is going to, we're going to go overview of the project as well as all the recommended strategies from the Project Advisory Group. So we have a lot to cover, so I'm going to get moving. Could we go to the next slide, please? So the purpose, as Oliver mentioned, the plan was to understand local housing challenges and identify opportunities to encourage the creation of additional housing types that are affordable to a variety of households within the unincorporated Vancouver urban growth area, which you see on this map in the darker grey color. This could be done through the removal of regulatory barriers and/or implementation of other strategies, which we will discuss today. The project area is a large urban area next to but not incorporated into the city of Vancouver. As Oliver mentioned, this is the focus for the plan as it's the county's urban jurisdiction, where different types of housing duplex, triplex, quadplex, condominiums, multifamily apartments, et cetera, can be built and where urban services are available and can be provided in an efficient manner. Next slide. Clark County under the Growth Management Act is required to plan for housing, including housing affordable to low-income households. The Growth Management Act includes specific requirements for how cities and counties should plan for housing. The county's comprehensive plan includes a housing element. The purpose of the housing element and its policies is to identify the need and mechanisms that will lead to the construction and preservation of decent housing for all economic segments of Clark County population. The county's Development Regulations, Clark County Title 40, implement the vision and policies of the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and the code dictates how the built environment will develop. As is shown in this chart, the Housing Action Plan can inform housing, land use, and other policies outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. It can also guide implementation of those policies by identifying strategies such as amendments to the county's development regulations and implementation procedures to further encourage housing development to meet our housing goals and policies. Next slide. Project staff have provided periodic updates to council since the beginning of the project, as well as members being interviewed during the stakeholder interview phase, which was the beginning in 2020, and councillor Olson participating on the Project Advisory Group. And we thank her for her participation through that process as well. Next slide. This graphic shows the different phases that the project went in and the schedule. So the, the main phases of understanding the issues and the review analysis was that background information stage that we called the Housing Option Study part of the plan. The development of recommendations with the advisory group and the public engagement that was held. And then, of course, preparing the action plan and, and Phase Five, the legislative process which we are in right now. Next slide. The full public participation plan, along with a list of public outreach events and meetings that took place during the project, is included in Appendix B of the, of the document. Part of the public participation plan included the initiation of an 18-member Project Advisory Group appointed by the county council and county manager to provide input throughout the project and assist the county with developing recommendations for consideration by the decision makers. The advisory group represented a variety of interest groups and stakeholders that are listed here. The advisory group met regularly for a year to learn and understand the issues and to develop consensus-based recommendations. Next slide. Other key tools used for the public participation plan include those listed on the slide, which were also, we included two virtual public meetings. One, we used a tool called Google Jam Board, which we see a graphic here. Sometimes traditionally we will go to open, have open houses somewhere where we use Post-it notes for people to post their ideas or comments about certain strategies or ideas. So we were able to do this virtually during COVID. We also had online questionnaires. We did CVTV videos and other briefings and meetings with stakeholders and interested persons. Next slide. On April 21, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the plan with a further recommendation to direct staff to begin immediate implementation of the short-term strategies, which we'll go over all today. The focus on the short-term strategies was to encourage the momentum of the project and be able to accomplish some immediate action, actionable items that could be accomplished within a year. The recommended strategies include potential changes to the Comprehensive Plan, county code, zoning map, and/or other non-regulatory recommendations for council consideration. Just things to note, to be clear, to clarify, approval of this plan does not approve any new policy, regulations, or code to go into effect. The plan includes a list of recommended strategies that are still at a conceptual level. They include a wide variety of ideas that could encourage the development of more housing types in the unincorporated Vancouver urban growth area. Whichever strategies council selects for implementation, additional analysis and feedback with interested parties will be required to figure out how best to implement the change. And for those strategies that are a code or land use change, the proposed change would go through a Type 4 public process with public participation, followed by hearings by the Planning Commission and County Council. We won't be able to implement all the strategies at once, but as is proposed in our monitoring plan, which we'll discuss a little bit here towards later in the presentation, we can incorporate check-ins with County Council and Planing Commission as part of our annual work program discussion with council and discuss the continuation of continually implementing strategies of the plan and check-ins on how we're doing so far. So with that kind of background and overview of the process, I'm going to pass it over to Steve Fost from Three J Consulting.
Thank you, Jackie, and good morning, Chair Bowerman and councillors. If we could go to the next slide, please. And the slide after that, please. We're going to go through some of our key findings. As, as Jackie said, we engaged in a number of activities at the outset of the project to better understand the issues around housing in the unincorporated area. We conducted stakeholder interviews. We worked with, I should mention Echo Northwest was a number, another member of our consulting team, and they looked at housing production and demographics. Elizabeth Decker reviewed land use policies, zoning, and regulations, conducted a legislative review to look at recent Washington State housing legislation, and conducted several case studies from other jurisdictions. And all that information can be found in full in the appendices. Next slide, please. So I want to share just some of the key findings from all of that background work that we did. First off, as I'm sure you all know, housing is getting increasingly expensive in the VUGA. Wage growth has been outpaced by increases in rents and home sale prices quite significantly. Next slide. Single-family owner-occupied dwellings are the predominant housing type in the county, but do not reflect the entirety of local needs. Nearly 60% of households are one-to-two-person households, but 70% of the stock is three and four-bedroom units. So another thing that we learned is that impact and development fees are high. This is from our stakeholder outreach and not scaled to support the development of housing types with smaller footprints. Next slide, please. We see that there is a relatively small supply of land for medium and high-density housing that really limits the variety of housing options that get built. You can see here both the residentially-zoned land is predominantly low-density and the available or the residential buildable land that's available for development is 84% low-density. Next slide, please. The aging of baby boomers and the household formation of millennials will drive the demand for renter and owner-occupied housing of all sizes. Most single-family units that are for sale in the study area, we have having a cost of around $400,000 or more, which is unaffordable to many potential homebuyers. Households at the lower and middle part of the income spectrum often have no choice but to pay increasingly higher rents because homeownership is out of reach. Next slide, please. So we see that approximately 13,300 units are needed over the next 15 years to meet the need in our study area. And if you look at the chart on the right, you see that a little over half or 6,000 of those 13,300 units are the need is for households with 120% or greater of area median income. We know that the market will generally take care of those households. But the other, the other 50% of households at 120% or less of AMI, the market does not necessarily take care of those household needs and certainly not for the 80% of AMI or less. Next slide, Pete, please. Sorry. So based on all of our background research, we worked with the Project Advisory Group and developed these five objectives for the Housing Action Plan. Encouraging housing development that meets the needs of middle-income households who are not being served in the current market. Number two, developing strategies to support the development of housing that is affordable to low, very low, and extremely low-income households. Number three, encouraging diversity in housing types and tenure, so both rental and ownership, including expanding middle housing options and increasing multifamily feasibility. Number four, encouraging the creation of a broad range of housing sizes that match the needs of all types of households with a focus on one-to-two-person households not being served in the current market. And number five, guiding the development of diverse housing options in areas with access to transportation corridors and transit and other amenities. And likewise, making sure that those types of services and amenities are added to areas that already have housing, where housing is added. Next slide, please. So now Elizabeth Decker and I will take you through the Housing Action Plan recommendations. We placed them into four categories. Housing options are regulatory strategies that expand housing development options and enhance residential development feasibility of existing housing options. The second category is affordable housing, looking at those low, very low, and extremely low-income households. Programs and partnerships, look at the administration of county programs or where the county's role is really to support or collaborate with partners to implement some of these strategies. And then advocacy, where we're looking at potential state legislative changes to allow strategies and tools that aren't currently available to the county. Next slide, please. We identified a number of aspects of these strategies to help folks understand them better. We've identified proposed timelines, short, medium, and long. Again, as Jackie mentioned earlier, we are prepared to begin implementing short-term strategies which build on existing policies, excuse me, and can be implemented within a one-year timeframe. Medium term could be implemented within one to two years and long-term, two-plus years. Next slide, please. We've also identified relative comparison of costs, the level of effort in terms of staff time and funding resources, household income targets, whether it's low or medium, and the type of action needed, whether it's administrative or legislative. So now, before I hand this over to Elizabeth Decker, next slide, please. There are a lot of strategies and we'll move through them quickly. It sounds like Oliver asked that we hold questions till the end. But yeah, please, please bear with us and Elizabeth, please take it away with the first set of strategies which we are presenting in terms of short-term, medium-term, and long-term.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Chair Bowerman and county councillors. Thanks for having us here to talk about the recommendations coming out of the Housing Options Plan. So as Steve mentioned, starting with these short-term strategies, these are generally based on capacity, both of staff and the consultant team. Part of what was important about this project was having implementation strategies move forward as part of the plan. So we are prepared to continue working on these based on direction from the council. So the first strategy talks about changing minimum lot sizes within the existing low and medium-density zones so that we can use the existing land more efficiently across the county more than the most significant portion of residential land is zoned for low-density. And so getting the greatest efficiency and capacity out of that land gets us an initial step to, to use what, use our existing policies. So we took a look at the minimum lot sizes for housing types that are already permitted within the Vancouver urban growth area, including single-family detached townhouses and duplexes. So looking for some changes to the minimum lot sizes there. And I'll also just note as we go through these, there are some specifics listed here. These are mostly for illustrative purposes. When we talk about, say, reducing minimum lot sizes by 10 to 20% in those low-density zones, that's a starting point. And based on the council's recommendation, we certainly would love feedback on some of those specifics. But as Jackie mentioned, approving the plan and moving it forward would not approve that specific aspect of the strategy. It would lay the groundwork for those future legislative changes that would then go through a full public process. So next, please. Next strategy looks at the high-density zones. Currently, the county has a relatively limited supply of land zoned for high-density. And so ensuring, again, similar theme, that we get the greatest efficiency out of that land by slightly increasing the minimum density there. That helps increase the number of apartments and multifamily residential that can be created on those lands. Next, please. And then the next piece looks at introducing new middle housing types. You heard Jackie allude to some of these. This is when we're looking at duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and townhouses specifically here. And across those low and medium-density residential zones, again, getting greater flexibility and expanding options within those areas that make up the majority of the residential land, both the existing and the vacant buildable lands. So setting new standards to permit these throughout residential neighborhoods really increases variety and capacity of housing. Next, please. And as a companion piece to introducing these new middle housing types, also introducing parking requirements that are specific for duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes that are less than the current requirement of two parking spaces per unit. So the discussion started at looking at a minimum of one space per unit and looking at other ways that there could be some flexibility to meet those parking requirements, to come up with some sort of balance between the site development feasibility and desire for parking. So how can we meet parking options but also make it more feasible to actually develop these properties, multiple units on a single lot so that the parking doesn't crowd out the housing opportunities? Go ahead. And a related requirement here, or a related strategy is looking at the minimum parking requirements that are currently classified for narrow lots in the development code that essentially means townhouses. The requirements there, there's some opportunity to adjust the minimum that's set at 2.5. Looking at changing that to two spaces per unit, as well as some related changes to driveway spacing and access to improve the functionality. Next, please. As Steve had mentioned, part of our work included a review of recent state legislation and understanding what the direction from state is. And so part of this, part of this, and these initial short-term strategies include complying with recent state legislation, such as these changes to the multifamily parking ratios. There are some direction to change the number of spaces so that it's set at one per bedroom. So, you know, a one-space minimum for multifamily if it's a one-bedroom apartment or a .75 space for studios, obviously it increases to two, three, depending on the number of bedrooms, and that's tied to access to high-quality transit. So sites that have access to transit or are regulated affordable housing units, which are two development characteristics that research has shown have been tied to lower parking demand that we implement those ratios to, to lower the parking requirements for those projects. Go ahead. The next strategy is a way to build upon the county's existing strength with the cottage housing standards that have been passed and recently revised. But there are some additional improvements, you know, incremental improvements as we go along and learn from other jurisdictions that have seen some success implementing this. So improving that feasibility of getting clusters of these smaller-scale units within a coherent site design at greater densities but smaller individual units. So a variety of strategies recommended here to adjust the density, the type of units, how the open space relates, what the parking opportunities are, and what the, and a chance to remove some discretionary architectural design standards so that the individual units are treated more like individual detached, single-family homes that are not subject to architectural design standards. Next, please. Another strategy that addresses apartment projects. So these would be larger projects with 13 or more units. Looking at some changes to the formula of how much open space and recreation area is required. We did some site analysis of how the existing requirements increase along with the site area needed to develop the actual apartments, as well as the parking, and found some opportunities to better align those three parts so that an existing site really could have the capacity to allow development at the maximum density permitted in the zone and get that greater efficiency. So to do that, there's some revisions to the formula that still require open space and recreation that focus on the quality of those spaces, adding more amenities rather than simply increasing area, right? We don't need more shrubs, we need more, more usable areas. So some changes there to help improve apartments. Next, please. And another area that the county has really led the way on is the Accessory Dwelling Unit or ADU standards. And so I'll say I've worked in 30 or more jurisdictions helping on ADUs. And, you know, I really had to look for some standards to, to find some recommendations here because there's a lot of really good policy that's already been passed. But, you know, it's our job with this to, to find some incremental improvements to recommend. And so we do have a number of relatively minor, but hopefully complementary strategies that would improve ADU feasibility. And I'll just point out the first one, I know we've had a few questions on this about parking requirements. And so we're looking at opportunities, if it makes sense to remove parking requirements entirely, or there is some recent state legislation, again, tied to access to transit, similar to the multifamily standards that we talked about. Thinking about whether a parking reduction based on access to transit might be more appropriate. So really just exploring opportunities there. But again, these are, you know, initial illustrative ideas and we can look for council direction as well as further refinement through a legislative process. Next, please. This is, this next strategy is a little bit of a technicality, but we're revising some of the definitions in the zoning code about household and housekeeping unit and family just to make them more neutral in terms of whether the numbers of people are related or unrelated. And this comes straight from some recent state legislation. So we're just getting up to, into compliance with this strategy. Next, please. We also, you know, as part of this project, really heard about the need for additional land for high-density multifamily projects, both market rate and affordable. And so there's a number of strategies that address this concern. But the first of these, where we saw an immediate opportunity and got strong support from the Project Advisory Group was to expand options for affordable residential uses in the commercial zones. So right now, mixed-use residential is permitted in those commercial zones where the ground floor is commercial and then residential above. However, for affordable housing providers, that is just not a project that's in their portfolio to get that mix of uses, to manage the commercial tenants. And also those projects are not always eligible for the same funding sources that affordable residential service providers are going after. And so an initial step is just for these projects that contain entirely regulated And so an initial step is just for these projects that contain entirely regulated affordable units that those could be permitted without a commercial component and across the commercial zones. So that was a strategy that we heard support for to help meet the needs of those households earning eighty percent or less the median area income that Steve had had pointed to needing some additional support. Go ahead, next please. And another strategy here to support affordable housing specifically is an emergent model that we heard about again through our project advisory group and housing providers, nonprofits, is a model of using existing hotels and motels for either temporary or permanent affordable housing. And so just providing some clarity in the code about what review process and how those uses are permitted. These are generally in the commercial zones and so making sure that that conversion to commercial or to residential use is clarified. Go ahead. And in terms of programs and partnerships, one of the strategies that emerged where there was some capacity and the timeline worked out to to move it to the short term is creating a new resource page on the county's website that brings together resources for mobile and manufactured home parks. There's a variety of state programs around park preservation and relocation assistance. We'll talk about some other strategies around mobile and manufactured homes as we move into the the medium and long term. But this was the immediate step that we saw could be done and was recommended by the project advisory group within the next year. So next please. Another effort that we heard from our partners through the PEG process was looking at how we can support their efforts to monitor regulated affordable housing projects as they near the end of their affordability expiration dates. A lot of the tax credits and and other programs that that bring these projects online often have a term of twenty, thirty or longer. And you know, thirty years sounds like a long time, but yet it does mean that some projects will reach the end of that period where they're required to meet affordability timelines and understanding where those where that expiration date comes and how to help those projects transition out of that requirement, but still continue to serve affordability goals is an important tool and making sure that we understand those timelines and we're supporting our partners to keep those abroad to keep those dates in mind will help manage that transition. Go ahead. And then as we move into the medium term, and again, these. Yes.
Sorry, I just, I know we we had talked about maybe holding questions, but I think we've gone through quite like a good part portion of the presentation. I'm just, and we still have a lot to do and I know we're, we definitely want to stay on time. But maybe just pause for to see if any specific questions so far. And then we we could do that after the medium and then long. And I think I'll have lover is good with that and hopefully council, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to take so so far for now.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Madam Chair, may I interject? Is Madam Chair there? Maybe not. So I I think it is a good time to pause and and I'm wondering if before we get into detail on medium and long term strategies, which are equally important. But I think, I mean, from a higher level, I would like to just skim through those as quickly as possible. You almost lost me as an audience until you actually started getting into these slides where you're actually making some concrete recommendations. You know, all the strategies and objectives, yeah, got that. We 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 know all that. Let's get into the meat of the sub subject. And so the short term strategies that you laid out, some right away, I'm like, wow, great, good idea. So let's get to it, you know, let's let's move forward. Some of it is, the challenge is going to be in the detail, you know, parking, changing densities, ruining the character of some neighborhoods. You know, those are the things that we need to really get into the weeds on and figure out how do we make this work? I mean, I hate driving into downtown Portland into a residential area that's near a shopping district or a restaurant district and never, never being able to find a place to park and there's no public transit available. You know, that's within the cities and we certainly don't want anything like that in the unincorporated area. The issues on ADUs and some of the strategies you have there, you know, densities are going to be an issue because some people have already complained about ADUs in some areas. And and enforcement is another thing. I mean, even your future changes on the ADUs, some of what we have existing now aren't being complied with. And so enforcement is going to be an issue. So the challenge will be in the detail and and it's great work, great ideas. And here's my one question though, ultimately. This is all within the urban growth area. However, we do have what we've referred to over the years as rural centers outside the urban growth area where a lot of these strategies would also be appropriate. You know, where we already have a development in the unincorporated area and they would benefit from some of these strategies as well. So I'm wondering if that could be worked into our discussion at some point. Are there some areas, limited areas outside the urban growth boundary where some of these strategies would really be applicable? And we should focus on adding them into those areas as well.
Thank you, Councilor Medvige for that question. So as you know, we we focus definitely on the urban unincorporated area for the analysis here and the advisory group. Specifically because a lot of those housing types that we're talking about like multifamily, smaller multifamily apartments and even duplexes and triplexes aren't currently allowed in the rural area, even rural centers. And that probably is another more maybe perhaps an advocacy state legislator legislative change that would need to occur to allow that type of housing type for because of the Growth Management Act. I don't know if Oliver has any further points to make on that question.
No, Councilor Medvige, thank you and 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 Jackie. We staff are monitoring recent amendment to the rural centers, what is typically classified as limited area of more intensive development. So there was a recent legislative amendment, we are going to be monitoring that to see exactly what is allowed because the limitations for those areas typically is that they don't have sewer, if you will, and the ability to develop the type of units that we are talking about. So we are going to be further looking at the recent legislation regarding limited area of more intensive development and see what is allowed and whether some of this short term like ADU or duplexes can be limited to those rural centers. In Clark County, only very few rural centers has sewer. For example, in the Hawkinson area in particular, but I'm not sure of what type of system that they have. Other rural centers do not have sewer, for example. I know Medevigil may may, and we will explore that. If you look at the other rural centers, they don't. And we will, we will see what the legislature allows us the ability to do. And as Jackie indicated, where that is not possible, we will be doing advocacy and and seeing what could come through the legislative arena to give us the opportunity to extend some of these uses in the rural rural centers, for example.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor Rylander.
I sat down last night to try to start digesting this deck of material. And if I was a drinking man, I would have had several beers at least. This is, there's so much material here and so much detail. I applaud you for all of the work and putting it all together. It is, it is almost overwhelming in the impact that it could have on an area and it raises a ton of questions. I've been sitting here writing notes on the impact on everything from traffic to crime to transportation to parking to sewage to water, changing characters of neighborhoods, et cetera. The need for change in mass transit. I guess I'm just observing how loud that there is so much here. I I'm not even sure how really you would begin choosing the right elements to implement in the right timeframes and at the right stages, but I look forward to learning more about the process.
Yes, Councilor, as we come to your hearing, we will further be taking a hard look at the short term strategies. And as also Jackie indicated and Elizabeth, any of these strategies before we start working on them will require extensive review of where they will be applied and how. And also will require public outreach. Many other stakeholders will be involved and we will be checking in with the council as to what we are hearing and what is feasible to do. And nothing will be done without the council approval in terms of proposed code changes. If that's what it entails. I will commend Elizabeth Decker for doing the audit that she did of our code to identify where opportunities exist and where we can make or propose changes to to the council going forward. So you are absolutely correct, this could be overwhelming. And we will work diligently with our council to keep you updated and not only planning commission, DEEP and all the stakeholders as we move on any of these strategies. I will stop there and maybe hear if other councillors have questions.
It seems that we have comments rather than questions, so I'll join that group. I certainly applaud, as I think everyone does, the goals of affordability and the diversity of housing that we need to have in our county. I also support and applaud your highlighting that you would check in periodically with and regularly with both the planning commission and the council on progress made toward the the goals. I am saddened though to see that the goals are basically achieved by building more densely and removing places to park rather than focusing on some of the things that are a little bit tougher to address such as how rapidly permitting is accomplished because that affects cost for the builders. What is the cost of the aggregate? And how can we make aggregate available to the builders in order to cut down on cost of the housing? What is the availability of buildable lands? And that, and I'm talking about for residential and for the type of diversity of residential that you're speaking of here. And those kinds of factors need to be incorporated in our buildable lands discussion that is coming up. I share that there is so much emphasis on the change of character of an area that I find it concerning. I have because and I find it concerning because of its impacts on so many things. I have lived in a community that tried to address affordability and diversity of housing. And frankly, they did it in this manner. And what happened was the development of very tight spaces where people basically couldn't move. There were cars jammed into the streets. There was tandem parking everywhere that made it so that it was downright dangerous for people to move cars out of their driveways. It was difficult for pedestrians, if not impossible. And yet there were skateboarders there and kids on bicycles out in the street. And the density just simply was a problem. It was a problem for safety. And then there was no space for neighborhood commercial in the areas that I saw developed like this. And I haven't heard about that here. And as you locate near this mass transit that is, I guess, going to be developed in in these areas, there it still has to be space for neighborhood commercials so that people have places to shop for the little things that are of interest to them and the support of the neighborhood, including the jobs. And then, and then there's so much, there's building apartments in commercial zones as a way to solve the problem. I say no, leave those commercial zones if you're going to have the goal met of having jobs available where the housing is located. So have additional residential land and that can be incorporated into the vacant buildable lands model. So basically, my comment is, please, as we develop this plan, and wow, it is really developed and obviously, you know, so much work has gone into it. But let's expand the horizon for solutions so that we are looking at accomplishing some of those things that will make Clark County a better place to live, not just a more crowded place to live. So those are my thoughts. I don't know if either councillors have comments as well, but I don't think that's necessarily what you were seeking at this point, Jackie. But it's an invitation and thank you for it.
You're welcome. And some like we mentioned, this is Elizabeth's gone through the short term. So there, so I think some of the comments you had are, there's some strategies related to those in the medium and long term that we're going to go through. And totally up to council, you know, on direction of what they're interested in pursuing, you know, now or later. And as we mentioned, you know, more back and forth on how to design those strategies for implementation and and nothing set in stone with this. These were ideas by the advisory group and and heard from the public and stakeholders on on some potential opportunities. So if there's no other questions right now, I will, we can pause after, you know, the next grouping and see if any more come up. But why don't we go ahead and let Elizabeth start the next several slides?
Great. Thank you, Jackie, and thank you for some of the those initial comments and feedback. So we will, you know, there might be a few strategies here that are of particular interest to help address some of them. And then as Jackie said, you know, this is why we're here for the work session and this adoption process. And we're excited to be at this point of getting council feedback of of how to have a package of options that really respond to the needs and the opportunities in Clark County. So as we look to the medium term, again, one of the distinctions here between the short term and the medium is not that the medium term is less important or less desired, just that these are generally strategies that are new concepts and so require more time and effort and input, including both council input as well as public input to shape these. And so, you know, in terms of sort of honest capacity, we wanted to say that these are medium term and likely would take more than the year timeframe identified for the short term. But again, as Jackie said, you know, if if there are things here that council wants to fast track and prioritize, these can be moved around, but that is just the distinction here that these are all equally important. And we just felt that they deserve some more time and capacity to develop fully. So first of those is developing what we are terming a compact subdivision option. So we talked about different ways to use the existing low and medium density lands that we have within the county, including both existing existing lands and the buildable lands. And this compact subdivision came up as an opportunity distinct from both cottage housing and the PUD path that currently exists. This would be a third way that would allow for smaller, single family detached dwellings on smaller lots to be permitted in, you know, we we talked about smaller infill sites, maybe five acres or smaller that have been passed over, leapfrogged for development or have some other challenges. And that by creating this new opportunity to use those sites for smaller lots, reducing the lot sizes as mentioned here, and then matching the scale of the dwellings to those smaller lots, there could be some opportunities to to get some more utility out of those smaller lots. And by shrinking the price, or shrinking the size of both the sites and the individual homes, that hopefully that could help me come in at a lower price point. Also aware that, you know, we've heard a lot about concerns about neighborhood character and how these could be integrated in ways that are respectful to that. And so a key aspect that we'd be considering with a compact subdivision is treating that perimeter for compatibility with any adjacent residential development. So that could include more setbacks, more landscaping, or other tools, things like height setbacks or other issues that could make it a more gentle transition. So next piece, or next strategy, please. Another area that we saw some opportunity to, for further revisions, was looking at the Highway 99 Plan. The Highway 99 Plan occupies about 11% of this Vancouver urban growth area, study area. So it's not the majority by any means, but it is not insignificant. And so we saw some opportunities there to retain the framework of the plan that went through a very robust process and has some robust cheerleaders. But some specific changes that could look at how regulated affordable housing projects go in as well as how these new middle housing types that we're talking about go into that plan and make it just a little bit, remove some of the friction there so that these housing types could be a little more streamlined within that plan area. Next, please. Another opportunity that we saw is looking, you know, a little bit outside of the traditional single-family detached dwellings. We heard that there was a need to look at recreational vehicles and tiny homes. Those are currently permitted in RV parks. They are permitted in the general commercial zone throughout the county right now, but looking at an opportunity to expand them within the community commercial zones. Again, keeping them in RV parks, but just, and in commercial zones, but just a little bit more commercial area that could provide an alternative residential option. Next, please. As you know, Clark County is really, has a very robust aging readiness plan. And so we heard loudly from our stakeholders about the need to integrate housing types that meet people of all ages and all abilities, that the future housing should meet the needs of, you know, people that are looking for more accessible options. And so part of our recommendation was to adopt a visitability program, looking at whether, you know, that could be a voluntary incentive or some code requirements to get a percentage of new housing units that meet some of these visibility standards. This is not full ADA accessibility that is required for some larger projects. But the visible standard is about literally getting people in the door. If you're having grandma come over for dinner that, you know, or someone else that has mobility issues, that it's easy and convenient for them to get into the unit with a, these are some of the characteristics, barrier-free entrance, a bathroom and living area, and wider doors. So looking about how we can get more units built that meet those standards. Next, please. Next, I mentioned sort of that there are these two existing paths, the cottage path that we talked about in the short-term strategies, the new compact subdivision option mentioned here in the medium term, but also the existing planned unit development ordinance. We saw another medium-term strategy here to provide greater flexibility within that ordinance. So the audit highlighted a few opportunities there that we can work on further developing for some flexibility. Next, please. And this is both a medium and long-term strategy, but you know, as we've touched on with a few of these strategies, there is, and as relates to the broader buildable lands conversation across the county, there is concern that there is not enough high-density residential land to accommodate some of these higher-density projects and to meet the demand for diversity of housing. And so this strategy is about looking at existing county land within the Vancouver urban growth area, looking at whether there are opportunities to upzone some of that to, you know, to medium or high-density residential. And also in a more long-term strategy, looking at how these higher-density zones can be applied to new land as it's brought into the urban growth area. And that needs to be a longer-term strategy because the urban growth area is a 20-year, longer-term implementation measure. So this one's a two-parter. Next, please. Another medium-term strategy is looking at, within the low-density zones, the short-term strategy is really focused on getting the most utility and flexibility out of the existing low-density zones as possible. And this medium-term strategy creates an opportunity to introduce a new low-density zone that would allow for some of the smallest lot sizes and therefore the greatest density of the low-density zones. So it's really creating another tool in the toolbox to implement the low-density designations. So next, please. Another piece here, another middle housing type that was not part of the short-term strategies because it's an entirely new use for the county that we felt deserved some more study and development of design and development standards, is looking at courtyard apartments. And those are smaller projects, about five to 12 units, typically, you know, one or two stories, smaller sites, and they, these can really have some opportunities for efficiencies of costs by having all attached units. But looking at ways that these could be implemented, initially looking at the medium-density zones as a way to get some different variety of housing types in there and make good use of the land. So, but would need some design standards for compatibility there. So we felt this made more sense as a medium-term strategy. Next, please. And we certainly hear you loud and clear about concerns about parking. And so trying to find that right balance of how much parking meets the demand and, you know, solves some of those safety conflicts and, you know, avoids jamming people in, but also doesn't require so much parking that the parking overwhelms the housing and crowds out housing opportunities. So as a medium-term strategy, we felt it really merited additional time and consideration to do some research and dig into what's available before we look at broader discussion about off-street parking minimums for those apartment and multifamily residential uses. As I mentioned, the short-term strategy is just about complying with the state mandate for units close to transit. And this medium-term strategy is about a more holistic study, looking at whether this one-size-fits-all, 1.5 space requirement is the right strategy or if there's some variation that could be introduced based on the size of units, where they're located and/or some residential characteristics, such as if it's senior housing or affordable housing, since there are different parking demands tied to different resident populations. So next, please. So we also heard both throughout the process, as well as in some of your initial comments, whether the commercial and mixed-use zones are the right target for creating more residential development. We think that there are some ways that more residential could be introduced in those areas through more of a mixed-use configuration, but that there are some changes needed to the mixed-use standards and how that ground floor commercial relates to the upper stories, where there could be some alignment with the way, you know, building codes and building codes work and other market demands, while still meeting, you know, the county's economic development goals for commercial lands to keep the focus on getting good jobs. So next, please. Another piece about the Highway 99 Plan is that we heard some concerns just about how the cross-circulation requirements are being implemented. And we identified this as medium-term, needing some more work with public works and engineers to understand how that cross-circulation can both, you know, provide the needed street development within the Highway 99 sub-area, but also understand some of the impacts on development feasibility so that we meet both goals of getting housing and development, but also meeting cross-circulation. So next, please. And then another strategy here about RVs and tiny homes. You heard about expanding RV parks in some commercial zones. And this medium-term strategy is about exploring whether there's opportunities for individual RVs and tiny homes to perhaps be integrated into individual residential lots and/or a different model of RV parks potentially within some high-density residential zones to provide more flexibility of housing options. Go ahead. Next, please. Another medium-term strategy where we're working to implement some state legislation talks about where there are religious organizations looking to add affordable housing on their properties. There is, there are some standards around allowing additional density, so bonus density for those projects. And also, we heard from our affordable housing providers on the peg that if there are other nonprofits that are not religiously affiliated, but also trying to provide affordable housing, looking at whether that bonus could also be extended to those types of regulated affordable housing projects at the same time. Go ahead. Next, please. And then, yeah, there was an earlier comment about looking at reducing review times, and we definitely heard that. The county has an entire audit that was completed separately from this project about development services and the permitting and review process. So in addition to, you know, recommending that the audit findings move forward, a few pieces that came forward in our project. First here was looking at if there are affordable, regulated, low-income housing projects, if there are some opportunities to streamline the land use and non-life safety engineering standards that are applied to projects for some streamlined permitting. So again, you know, we're not looking at undermining fire life safety here. We're just looking at if there's some consolidated review opportunities. Okay, next, please. Another program and partnerships strategy, when we talk about some different exemptions or different permitting strategies for these regulated affordable housing projects. An issue that got really broad support from our, from our planning advisory group was to have a single affordable housing point of contact within the county so that there could be one staff person or small group of staff people that are identified to provide resources and understand the various aspects of code that apply to regulated affordable housing and really help shepherd a project like that through the application and permitting process. So getting that single point of contact was highly desirable. Next, please. Great. You know what, I actually believe at this point I'm supposed to be turning this over to Steve. So I'm going to turn this over to Steve at this point to walk through the rest of the medium-term strategies. And he's going to talk about, yeah, the intercomplementarities. So Steve, take it away.
Thanks, Elizabeth. There's a few more medium-term strategies, then we'll pause again for questions and comments. So this is referring back to, and I think we heard councillor comments about housing with amenities, you know, shopping, transportation, things of that. This is starting to work with residents, property owners and developers to discuss ways to best encourage and support those neighborhood-scale retail uses within neighborhoods. Next slide, please. This strategy recommends reviewing the county's master permit program to see if adjustments can be made to improve the program or if a different approach to master permitting is preferred. Next, please. Supporting the initiative for electronic plan review kind of gets to that idea of improving timelines for review. Next slide, please. Developing a marketing and communications plan on any new changes to code or other strategies to really help the public and developers understand what those changes are. Next slide, please. This strategy would be to adopt a notice of intent to sell ordinance that would require owners of multifamily buildings to provide official notification to tenants and local housing officials when they plan to sell those buildings. Next slide, please. Identifying ways in which the county, and this is probably to continue, for the county to continue to support the Vancouver Housing Authority achieve its mission. Next slide, please. So that's it for the medium-term strategies. And I think Jackie said she'd like us to pause again for questions and comments.
Madam Chair. Okay. The medium set of slides, I seem to be generally to follow the short term in the general theme, and the theme is, is pack more people into smaller spaces and the challenges and issues that go with that. One of the things I've noted in my travels over the years is you get into higher density where they reduce the number of parking spaces per unit. And yet, because of affordability issues with the housing units, you pack more people into the apartments or the houses and you end up getting more vehicles, which then compound problems in the local area for traffic, parking, et cetera. And I'm curious, have you, at this stage, set up a plan for actually getting public feedback, understanding that most people in the public will only worry about this if it's in their backyard? You know, if it's, if there's some aspect or aspects that are going to be changed in their particular area, that's probably when they'll really pay attention and care. Is there a way to get to them ahead of time and say, here's potentially what could impact you in your area, what do you think?
Thank you, councillor, for your question. Yes, so at this point, we have done some public outreach on these conceptual ideas and strategies that are listed here in the plan. So they were part of the virtual open house and questionnaires and some individual meetings we had with interested groups. But once the council directs us to actually move into, implement some of these ideas, no matter what they are, a new public process will begin. And with more specifics to communicate on what could potential be a change. So we have our ways that we are required to communicate to the public, depending on if it's a, you know, more site-specific area or just those that are interested and want to learn more. So we will definitely have a communication plan, kind of a public participation plan like we did for this project, for any implementation measures that council directs us to move forward with. Hope that answered your question.
It's a good start.
Should I continue if there aren't any other questions or comments at this time?
Yes, please do.
Okay. As we go through the final set of strategies, the long term, I just again want to acknowledge the project advisory group, such a diverse group of folks that dedicated over a year. They met nine times, I believe, over the course of the project and really are the, went through, you think this is a lot of strategies. They went through a lot more and kind of got us to this point. So I want to acknowledge the work of that group. Okay, let's go to the next strategy, please. This strategy, again, long-term strategy is looking at the countywide planning policy regarding a 75-25% split between single-family detached housing and alternatives to that type of housing with all jurisdictions, looking at that during the comprehensive plan update to see if that ratio still makes sense or if it should be adjusted. Next slide, please. More around manufactured home parks, studying existing parks, identifying the potential for displacement and developing strategies to reduce or mitigate displacement. We actually heard from a lot of the members of the public during our public comment periods and during our public meetings about the importance of protecting manufactured home parks as a source of affordable. protecting manufactured home parks as a source of affordable housing. Next slide, please. Conducting a comprehensive review of impact fees to reflect the impact of different dwelling types and allow, align with county goals to support smaller, more affordable housing options. But we note that we would need to maintain current revenue levels through that review. Next slide, please. Conducting a comprehensive review of impact fees to implement up to an 80% impact fee reduction for regulated affordable housing that's authorized by state legislation, but again, wanting to maintain current revenue levels for the county. Next slide, please. Exploring the potential of a county tax increment financing tool that would support affordable housing goals and which, which areas within the study area would be best suited for a tax increment financing district. Next slide, please. Exploring development standard bonuses for regulated affordable housing, things like parking reductions and density bonuses. Next slide, please. Reducing the development review timelines for select projects by finding ways to combine and streamline land use, engineering and building permit reviews. This strategy was mentioned earlier and we have it here. I think it just takes some coordination amongst different groups to make sure that we can streamline those, those different review processes. Next slide, please. Studying ongoing housing production trends and the prevalence of certain housing types in the limited, medium and high-density zoned land. Again, so kind of you'll see several strategies that recommend tracking housing information over time so we can better calibrate and make new recommendations for improvements. Next slide, please. Exploring options to increase access to neighborhood-scale retail and service uses, as we mentioned earlier, such as coffee shops within residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Another tracking strategy, monitoring housing development, especially multifamily development over time. So we can note correlations between regulatory actions and resulting development trends. Next slide. Inventory available public lands annually so that the county can decide if it would be appropriate to donate or lease public lands for affordable housing development. Next slide, please. Researching the impacts of short-term rentals in Clark County. And if, if it seems warranted, then looking at developing a county policy around short-term rentals. Next slide. Working with aging and disabilities advocates in the community to develop a universal design program that would encourage more housing options for those that are disabled or mobility-challenged. Next slide, please. We get, these are our final strategies around advocacy. Continuing council advocacy efforts to expand the multifamily tax exemption, excuse me, to counties. And the PAG went on, went further beyond just making that tool available to recommend an income target in the 50% to 80% area media income range. And our last strategy is supporting legislative changes to fix issues with the state's condominium defect liability law. Just a reminder that the bill was passed, but we're unsure at this time what that impact will be and if more legislation change might be needed. So we, Jack, you want to pause again for questions and comments before, before we go in briefly into implementation and monitoring?
Sure. This time I actually have questions. Not a robust comment here. One question is you commented on the short-term rental policy. I normally think of VBROs and that type of thing. That must not surely, that is not what you're referring to here. What are you referring to?
That is what we're referring to. We, we recognize that this area is not an area where these short-term rentals are predominant, like they are in more tourist areas. But in other areas of, of the region, there is an impact when, when housing is being taken up for short-term rentals and isn't available for longer-term rentals. So that strategy was constructed, that's why it was constructed to say, let's take a look and see if there's a problem here. And if there is, then the county could take the next step of looking at developing a policy around that. But, but if it's not an issue or impacting the availability of rent, long-term rental properties, then no need to do so.
I see, thank you. And the second question is dealing with the RV parking that you discussed that people were hoping for availability of that. That is in Vancouver City related to a homeless strategy. Is that what your reference point is with, with that strategy, or is it something different?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I can provide some initial thoughts. One is that I'd say that that's going to be one of the foundational questions we would start with, with that research question. In some of my work in other jurisdictions, looking at RVs and tiny homes, there certainly has been an emerging trend to use those to help address issues around homelessness. But there are also various, you know, housing options where people are just looking for a smaller home, a more flexible home, more mobile for various reasons. And so understanding the diversity of ways that RVs and tiny homes could meet different segments of housing need would be one of the first pieces of any implementation work around that strategy. But it would not be limited to just homelessness at this time.
It's not, but, but is it a homeless strategy as far as how you're approaching it there? I know when we first moved to this community, we had to rent a space for our RV in order to have a place to live while, and, and we did, we went and rented one and it was absolutely not a problem. So I'm not exactly understanding how this approach differs.
Sure. So I think that broadly speaking, some of the strategies, and there's a couple of different ones. We've, you know, identified some shorter-term and some longer-term ones. The idea is to just expand where those places are that you could rent and live in your RV, whether it's a, a short-term while you're looking to get into more permanent housing, or whether it's, you know, preferred lifestyle for certain folks that, you know, just really like the tiny home, more simplified lifestyle. But that, you know, right now it's really limited to RV parks in just the general commercial zone. And so while there are some spaces available, are there ways to have more? And say, you know, right, so that's where, that's where it's starting from.
I see, thank you.
Thanks.
If there are no other questions or comments, I can move to our last few slides regarding implementation and monitoring. So this is just a recap of some of what Jackie said earlier. If the council approves the Planning Commission recommendations, county staff can begin to work consistent with any direction and guidance we get from the council. Staff has current capacity and resources to begin immediate implementation work of those short-term strategies to complete within a year. Staff, and we certainly can, can consider any medium or long-term strategies that council wants the group to get started on. Staff will report to council annually on the progress of implementing strategies and then council may elect to proceed with the implementation of additional medium and long-term strategies. And then the proposed monitoring program will provide a system for measuring the effectiveness of these strategies in achieving our objectives. Next slide, please. So in terms of the Planning Commission recommendation on April 21st, that body recommended approval of the Housing Options Study and Action Plan, including directing staff to immediately begin implementation work of the short-term strategies. And that is the conclusion of our presentation and we're happy to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, just a comment to wrap up here from, from my perspective, participating in the process over the last almost two years, I think. I would also just like to reach out to Oliver's team, Jackie, Jenna, Susan, and just say thank you for all your work and Oliver you as well. In addition to Steve and Elizabeth, the work that you've done on this project over the last number of months and years has been fantastic. And a lot of the comments this morning for the councillors, these are discussions that took place during this process and, and and as we move forward to potentially implementing some of the recommendations, we get to talk about all the issues around parking and around density and around neighborhoods and how we work through that. So. So there was a lot of thought and a lot of work put into this, to this report and this recommendation. So I just appreciate all those, the PAC members that participated. Over nine times we met and for hours and hours at a time. So it's been a long, but I think rewarding process for those who participated and clearly you see the level of detail that was presented today. So I would, yeah, I would encourage us to move forward and, and as the opportunities present themselves to implement some of the recommendations that we do that with thought and, and outreach and transparency. So thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have a comment, Madam Chair.
Yes, councillor Mandic.
Yeah, so I look forward to getting into the details of the short-term strategies and, or changes, and some of them are really time-sensitive. We need to move. It has been a long process and, you know, we keep putting off, well, we have an Housing Options Study going on. We've been saying that for a couple of years. So there are some things that are, we could really put in place almost immediately for direct impact. You know, some of the issues with permitting, length of time, issues like that, you know, if there is something that you specifically want to weigh in on that, that is a short-term, not a midterm or a long-term recommendation. So if there's something specific, you know, we, we already have that in the works. The county manager is working hard on improving our permitting timelines and permitting process. And some of the long-term strategies we also are already doing and working towards, you know, we're work, we have a good working relationship with VHA and I think we're going to expand on that. And of course, some of us may not be here for a midterm or long-term impact and we can't bind future councils. So let's, let's get down to work. Let's get the short-term topics that you've keyed up, get into the detail and see where we can make it work. You know, the one, location, location, location. You know, it's a timely and pertinent saying by the real estate agents in the world. And a lot of these suggestions are going to be very dependent on locations. And anyway, I look forward to this and I'm hoping that we can facilitate a quick process here.
Other questions and comments from council? And if there's nothing that staff wishes to add, perhaps this concludes the work session.
I'll just wanted to add that the Planning Commission's video is available for anyone who would like to watch or listen to their deliberation. And we should have the, the verbatim minutes posted soon. So those will also be part of your hearing packet. So if there's, you want to go reference those, they will be available.
Thank you for that, Jackie. And is there any other final comment? Okay, our work, I'm sorry, who was that?
This is Oliver, not from me, councillors. I just want to thank you for your audience. I know it took some time, but we wanted to cover all the strategies with you and the entire report is also available. And thank you for indulging and all your excellent questions and comment. We look forward to your hearing on the 17th.
Thank you, Oliver. We always appreciate your positivity. What can we say? We now are finished with the work session and we're ready to move into council time. I'm looking at the